Good morning again. It is still Monday, November 10th, 2025. This is a special meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. We are live in City Hall Commissioners Room, second floor. I'd like to call this meeting to order at nine, oh goodness, 10:52 a.m. With that, we're going to do the roll call. Commissioner Galante.
Present.
Commissioner Good.
Present.
Commissioner Saunders.
Present.
Commissioner Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Thier.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
And Mayor Stan Mills here. We have a full complement of the mayor and commissioners. They're going to have a quorum, and we can formally conduct business today. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for watching virtually. Also, for those in person, we want to let you know we welcome your feedback. Rules for engagement are at the bottom of the agenda. And as a reminder, support documents, those are documents that support our agenda. Items are embedded into the electronic version of the agenda on our online portal. With that, there is a statement I would like to made real quick, and that is, I want to note that some comments that were made during the previous meeting from a commissioner did not reflect the level of civility and respect that we expect and require in this forum. Our meetings are intended to foster constructive dialogue and mutual respect. And even when we disagree, I urge everyone to keep this standard in mind moving forward. Thank you. With that, the purpose of this special meeting, as there, did I say there's no correspondence? The purpose of the special meeting is twofold, but we'll start off with 4A. Consider award of contract for the installation of pedestrian safety improvements on Rehoboth Avenue at the boardwalk and bandstand. Evan?
Thank you, Mayor. And if you could project the presentation on the screen. I want to take a few minutes just to go over a presentation on the bandstand boardwalk vehicular barrier plan. As I mentioned this morning in the workshop meeting, I think there's some misinformation out there about exactly what it is we're proposing to do. So I want to just run through this plan again and maybe provide a little bit more information. So the city is exploring the installation of two different sort of safety systems. One is a swing gate, and you'll see in the later slides that the swing gates are proposed at the end of Rehoboth Avenue on the boardwalk. And then we're also looking at fixed bollards. So at the last meeting, the last regular meeting that we had last month, a contract was awarded or proposal was awarded to Gibraltar for the manufacturing of these safety systems. So that was approved at the last meeting, and what is up for your consideration today is for the proposal to install these systems. So I just want to run back through again the conceptual layout. This is at the end of Rehoboth Avenue, approaching the bandstand at the restroom. We have roughly 32 bollards located here, and the bollards extend across the sidewalks on the north side, the south side, and then also along the sidewalk in front of the restroom facility. They're located here again so that we can physically secure the bandstand area in the event of either a special event or the summer concert series. And so that is the proposed layout at this time. Certainly, as we get out there and we look at site conditions, bollards may shift slightly one way or the other, forward, backward, again depending on utilities. You know, there's ADA curb ramp here. Obviously, we would not place a bollard in front of the curb ramp. So as we get out there, locations may change a little bit, but again, this is the conceptual layout. Additionally, here at the restroom, these bollards will likely be located a little bit further back. That's just to accommodate the dart bus being able to pull up because sometimes the bus, because of its size, does hang over the curb line a little bit as they get closer to the bus stop there. So that's a conceptual layout for Rehoboth Avenue approaching the bandstand. The next slide is just a concept rendering of what that could look like. The second location is Rehoboth Avenue at the boardwalk. I mentioned before that we are looking at two swing gates. So those are the yellow rectangles here depicts where those are located. There's a 16-foot clearance here to accommodate vehicle, but then also any emergency response vehicles. We have been in contact with the fire company as well as the fire marshal. Both have supported this, the swing gates here, and have determined that that's appropriate for their access onto the boardwalk. The remaining green dots are the fixed bollards themselves. And I just want to mention that the bollards are spaced five feet apart. That ensures plenty of clearance for pedestrians to pass through the bollard systems and also maintain accessibility. One thing I want to mention is, again, for your consideration today is the proposal to install these bollards. I have been in contact and will continue to be in contact with the hotel developers because, as we know, construction is imminent on both the north and south side of Rehoboth Avenue. And so I have approached at least the one Rehoboth Avenue team and hope to approach the Bellhaven team soon to request that they install the bollards in those locations. The last thing I would, I would want to do is pay to have the, the bollards installed in these locations, only to have them removed and then subsequently reinstalled by the hotels, those developers. So again, that is something that I'm in contact with them on, just so that, you know, that saves the city a little bit of money with the install and ultimately doesn't lead to an improvement that's only later removed and then put back in. So again, 35 bollards here and then two swing gates. This is a conceptual rendering that was done that was prior to the proposal to install the swing gates. So you'll see that there are bollards located here, but again, swing gates would be used just to scroll back up to give you an idea of what those swing gates look like. Those are what, what they are. And then just to recap the schedule for 2025, 2026. So the deadline to issue the notice to proceed to the installer, that is, to enable them to get this project on their schedule is today, November 10th. Product manufacturing, again, the proposal to, for Gibraltar to purchase, manufacture those bollards, that was done last month, so during the month of November, December, January, they will manufacture those products and ship them to us. We expect installation to commence as early as February, but certainly by March of 2026. And then obviously, our deadline for completion is May 15th, just before the summer season. I'm going to jump over to the proposal to install. This is a proposal that's embedded in the agenda as a support document. Concentric Security is the installer. They actually have worked with Gibraltar on various other projects, most notably the Ocean City, Maryland Boardwalk pedestrian safety plan down there. They were the contractor awarded for the installation of that project. Total price is $612,000 for the installation of both locations, and that's the swing gates and the bollards themselves. There's also an option you'll see in here for brick paver work under this contract, which would be an additional $200,000. We have been in contact with Concentric Security, and they are a local company, but they would subcontract the paver work. So this was a rough estimate from them on what they think it could cost in conversations that the Director of Public Works and I had with them just last week. We think it's very high and likely going to be significantly less than this. They are open to working with a subcontractor that we are familiar with, and so we've provided them with at least one name of a potential contractor that could do that work. So again, right now, they have it plugged in at $200,000. We expect it to be under that. I would recommend that we award the proposal for both the boardwalk and bandstand installation and the option for brick paver work, knowing that that cost is going to come down once they find that subcontractor to do the work. Henry and I were out, Director of Public Works and I were out the other week actually taking a look at the paver work. And at the end of Rehoboth Avenue by the restroom, there's minimal paver work here. We're thinking that the bollards, like I said, would be installed just behind the pavers here, so there would be some minimal paver work at some of the curb ramps on both the sidewalk side, but then also the sidewalk here. A majority of the paver work is going to be the end of Rehoboth Avenue at the boardwalk. You can see the different colors here. This is all, these are all pavers. But I will mention that the bollards going in here are not shallow-mounted bollards. So rather than being more of a spread footer, they go further down into the ground, which means there's less of a disturbance area, less paver work is going to be necessary in this location. So again, we are doing everything we can to work with the contractor to recommend subcontractor that could do this paver work at substantially less than that. And certainly, we can keep the commissioners apprised of what that decision is whenever it's made and what we estimate that to be. That is all I think I wanted to present. Certainly, we're here to answer any questions you might have, and Henry's here as well. If there's any specific questions, I can't answer.
So if we chose to go be favorable to this, what would be the motion, regardless, what would be a motion?
It would be to award the proposal as outlined in the proposal for the boardwalk and bandstand installation with the option for the brick paver work.
All right. I want to go to the members of the public. Does any commissioners want to say something first?
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, you've answered this to me privately, but I'd like you to answer it for the sake of the public, as there have been some questions. Can you explain just real briefly why this is so expensive?
Sure. So the installation itself, I mean, there's, like I said, there, there could be some challenges with specifically the site location. I don't expect there to be many challenges aside from some of the utility work. Now, the quantity of the bollards is, is, is high only because we have to locate them five feet spacing. That's a manufacturer's recommended, recommended spacing. But essentially, this is not an excavate for one bollard location, install it, and then move to the next. This would be an entire excavate of the area, install everything, and then pour everything back over top. That just helps, obviously, with speeding things up a little bit faster, helps with aesthetics, matching everything in, you know, once it's all done. So that's a majority of why, you know, the expense is so high. And then, as I said before, brick paver work is extremely expensive, and at the end of Rehoboth Avenue, that is all brick pavers. So we at least tried to bring that cost down a little bit by changing up the style of the bollard that goes in there. And again, trying to talk to Concentric Security specifically about identifying a subcontractor that is well-versed in doing the paver work to bring that cost down.
Mayor.
Commissioner Stewart, and then Commissioner Good.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So how do, how does an emergency vehicle get past the front of the bandstand?
This location here?
Yeah.
So this travel lane here would remain open, and so anytime that there is closure of the bandstand area, we would put a patrol vehicle there, or we're also exploring the possibility of doing maybe some modular vehicle barriers. But at this time, we're proposing to continue to use police cruisers as a physical barrier at that location.
Okay. And then the ones up at the boardwalk, the swing gates? Which way do they open?
So the one on the left would swing towards the center.
Okay.
And then the one on the right would also swing towards the center.
Okay.
So this one would swing to the right, and this one would swing to the left. And again, the opening for both of those swing gates is 16 feet. I will tell you, ironically enough, I mentioned, Henry and I were down there the other day looking at the paver work there, and while we were there, we had a vehicle use the pedestrian access ramp and actually pull up onto the sidewalk here during our time there. I, I don't know if they were pulling up just to get a better view of the boardwalk and the beach, or whether they actually thought it was some type of street. I don't know, but we just happened to be down there and actually observed somebody use this ramp to pull up onto the sidewalk there.
Mayor.
Commissioner Good.
So when this was first introduced, I had very little background in this sort of security. So I've done a, a moderate amount of research, including the feedback that Ocean City, Maryland got, although their, their bollard install, I believe by the same company, has, is limited to the boardwalk. But my problem now, in addition to the very large price tag for this, is I think we need a, a more holistic approach, which includes potentially moving the bandstand concerts to another, another location within another year or two. I appreciate the citizen from Stokely Street who showed us the reality in Bethany. They have a much wider, they, I guess it's, you know, it's more acreage where the people can spread out. So this seems like overkill for two reasons, with the possible exception of maybe contracting for those, is it three areas of the boardwalk in addition to, or in addition to the east end of Rehoboth Avenue. Maybe think about that, but short term, the police cruisers, I've seen them during the concerts, and we may need, you know, more labor hours from the, the officers. Get, deal with that, we deal with it that way, summer of 2026. I think the aesthetics are awful, and for this amount of money, I'd like to see us have a beautification of that east side of the, of that eastern tip of Rehoboth Avenue. Like, I feel like we're not getting good value for the money. Also statistically, I just don't, I'm not convinced yet that Rehoboth is some high-risk or high-value target of all these criminals, terrorists, whatever. And the problem is that you can't predict the methods they're going to choose. I mean, at, at what point do we assume, well, maybe they're going to send a military-grade drone, which, and then we have to get like an iron dome shield for, I guess, the entire area near the bandstand? So I'm, I, you know, I really was open-minded when I first heard about it, and I do see the reviews of this particular security company are favorable. So, you know, I know that, I appreciate that staff and the police have, have not, are not leading us down some, you know, some path of some, you know, less-than-stellar contractor. So I, I don't know whether anyone else has hesitation because, well, number one, the price tag. Number two, of these, the unattractive look of these bollards. I've also taken it upon myself when traveling in recent months to look at bollards in other places, and a lot of them, they've attempted to put some shrubs to sort of, you know, camouflage them a bit. That doesn't seem to be part of this, well, maybe a little bit. So is anyone else, I was hoping I could get some, you know, support for putting this on pause, getting a long-term solution for the bandstand concerts. As I said at the previous meeting, you know, people camp out there. I'm the type of person who likes to walk. We just meander down there around 8:30 and stand because it's just so crowded. I often see some of my fellow commissioners sort of like squeezed between the curb and whatever else. So anyone else have some, some hesitation here, besides, you know, I'm always going it alone?
There's no comments. I'm going to go to the public, and then we'll come back to the commissioners. Would anybody would like to speak? Allison, come back up to the lectern again, if you would, please. Same procedure, state your name and address, and you've got three minutes. Thank you, Allison.
Do I do the whole introductory thing again? Allison from Go Fish.
Your name because it's being recorded for.
Yep. Allison from Go Fish Restaurant on the ocean block of Rehoboth Avenue. So this just happened to come, this whole bollard thing, just, I just happened to see it on Facebook a few weeks ago, and so I hurriedly went around and talked to everyone because we see this, not so much the bollards in front of the toilets or across the boardwalk, but on our sidewalk. This is a public sidewalk to our businesses, and this is what we were against. And I came here, really, I came here optimistic at the last meeting, thinking, oh, I just want to bring this to their intention. I need to let them know how this impacts our business, how the concert series impacts our business. And you guys voted. I was shocked. And then also in the meeting, when Mayor Mills asked Evan, did you talk to the businesses about this? And I wound it back after I left this meeting. And he said, I spoke to the Chamber of Commerce, and I spoke to Main Street, almost as if to say he got their blessing. So I called both last week. I had a long chat to Carol. I had a long chat with Dan, and neither one of them was asked about the impact on the businesses. Neither one. Dan was pitched from a safety point of view, and yes, he's all about safety. Carol, I let her speak for herself, but anyway, so we, none of us were consulted about this. These bollards on the sidewalk are an accident waiting to happen. I routinely, routinely go out with bags of ice for people that have tripped on a, on a curb that's too high. They don't imagine in their mind to step up so high because the curb's too high. I mean, people, kids are running along the street. You've got animals on leashes. You've got people in wheelchairs. They're looking everywhere, but maybe right in front of them, they're going to come up on a bollard. What about a lovely planter here? One of those really robust planters that I've seen along the street with flowers in it? That would be lovely, but this is just another deterrent for people. And if I was from out of town and I drove up and I saw a line of bollards from one side of the street to the other, I'd think, well, that's a no-go area. This is where we turn around, and all those businesses in the circle are not going to get noticed. And then lastly, because I know I'm running out of time, I ran out of time on the last thing, but I have a request. If somebody could please go down to the bandstand now and turn off the sign that's been up there for over a week for a run that happened last Sunday morning, and the first thing you see is entire bandstand closed or entire parking closed. I tried to get a picture of it today, but my camera wouldn't take it. That's been up there all week for an event that happened on 11/2. The people are driving around. They don't necessarily see 11/2. They see no parking in the bandstand. I mean, we've had to live with that for a week. I, I went to work last Sunday. I came out the front of my restaurant. They were packing up a couple of tents for the run that they had. That was 11:30. I'm just going to finish this, and then I'll be done.
Thank you.
An hour later, I went back. There was nothing there. That was at 12:30. By 2:19, I'm standing down and watching all these cars drive around, nowhere to park. I called the police station, and I said, could you please send someone down to move those three cones? Who's managing this?
Thank you, Allison.
We're the ones that have to live with these bollards, live with these signs. Who's managing it all, and who's listening to us?
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Members of the public? Colin, and then Francis, and then Carol.
Hi, there. Collins Roth, Boardwalk resident. A quick comment about this. I'm just struck by the word that this has not been looked at holistically across things. And as somebody very focused on walkability and encouraging walkability around town, I'm really struck by that. I've sat through meetings here. We've considered street clutter of newspaper boxes, for example, and we're adding street clutter here. I look at this, and I see that there's bollards sitting on top of where their benches are today. Well, fortify the benches, right? You know, let's think about this holistically. We can reduce the amount of clutter on the street by having a bench that's reinforced. I see trees blocking the way there. Why not use a natural barrier like trees, which, again, can also stop a car, if that's the complaint? So I think this hasn't really been thought through holistically and haven't had a step back coordination and planning across an urban streetscape that could potentially add value to the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Colin.
Hi, Frances Kelleher, 318 Stokely Street. Actually, Collins just covered kind of a main point that I wanted to bring up, and I guess I can't use a pointer there, but I wanted to ask, well, I can't ask Evan, but I wanted to comment with what Evan has shown us today. I mean, the one thing I thought of in front of the bathrooms is, are those bollards really too close to the street so that if somebody was there to drop off a handicapped person or whatever, or their door swing's going to hit them? But the main comment I had is my hope is that our town, our resort town, is not going to look like a fort. I hope the placement of each and every bollard will be well-thought-out. And I put, if there are places where there's already a barrier, like a light pole, a fire hydrant, well, then that's a barrier. And then I put, when Evan put this picture that's up there now on the screen, and I looked at it, and I thought, why don't you move the swing gate down to where the shrubs are? Why don't you have it, you could form that same protection, but down at where the shrubs are, and it could look much more aesthetically pleasing. Things could be used to camouflage those bollards. Lastly, I wanted to say about safety. I mean, I, I'm really concerned about bollards being anywhere near along the bandstand. People are going to lean up against them. And if you want to take it to an extreme about children, I can envision children climbing up and trying to sit on the top of them, and then I can imagine those kids falling backwards and cracking their heads on the sidewalks. So I just think there, I'll echo, let's have a very careful and holistic look at the placement of each and every bollard to maximize, you know, all of the goals.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Carol Everhart, Rehoboth Beach, Dewey Beach, Chamber of Commerce. This issue probably created one of my highest-ever number of calls into the Chamber of Commerce, and it wasn't just businesses, it was also residents. The number-one thing is no one, absolutely no one, was against safety. They all saw the need for it to be safe. The number-two thing from the business community was, if you place those bollards across the entire width of that sidewalk, you are really going to hamper the visitors, customers, from reaching those businesses. So the main concern was, if you're going to place this, these safety measures down there, do it in a way that has the least impact on the business community. And I guess I just, I'll just end with that unless there's a question, but that, this is number-one for downtown, other than streetscape. So we've got to go back a lot of years. This was the number-one, highest number of calls of concern. And I did get a number of calls from the visitor, and their calls were really, they were confused of what this was going to look like. That was really what it was. But no one, no one was against it being safe. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Carol.
Walter Rudingham, 123 Hennepin Avenue. I copied off, part of the tape is that, I'm sure Chris is in the background, but after a more than a year of executive sessions, this comes forward. Total disrespect to the public of the people of Rehoboth. I heard Evan report that the bollards are already proposed to be modified. I think these bollards, if you want an idea what they look like, there's a Royal Farms store at Harbison. They go all the way around the place. They are closer than five foot. I appreciate the fact that they were there. I would like you to think a little bit about all the garden lawn companies that we have in the Rehoboth area, and just about every one of them have paper blocks. And we would, that we would look at $200,000 if, if we're dealing with paper blocks. And we would, that we would look at $200,000 if, if we're dealing with paper blocks. I'm going to someplace quickly. But I'd like you to think about what a mess it was at your project, the Rehoboth Beach lifeguard facility, when it comes to layout. And what I did not see from Concentric, the people from Sykesville, Maryland, is in red, all the things that are not part of the contract. And I think that should have been up there. It's part of the, part of the documents in the, that were available in addition to the items of scope of work. I think it's insulting to the people of Rehoboth. We've never had a problem. I'm done with this comment. When Mr. Biden was not even president and we were in Georgetown and a Secret Service man said, Mr. Ruddingham, you're very resistant to me being here. And I said, yes, sir. And he said, well, you need to understand that with Mr. Biden, it's not Mr. Biden. It's a potential President of the United States. We don't have this level of security when we have the President. They park across the street in the fire company parking lot. They go into the summer house. We don't enforce our own rules as it is now. And now we're going to lock the city down. And I just think it's wrong. It's overly expensive. And if you're going to have somebody do the garden work, that is, put the paper blocks down, have somebody else do it. But this is just a masonry job. And you got, you can't even keep a skid loader off the end of the boardwalk right now without the police department and the building and licensing going to send an enforcement officer. I heard the beep.
Thank you, Walter.
They don't, you're going to send an enforcement officer down to get a skid loader off the boardwalk? And that's going to remove the hazard. That's a hell of a situation we're living in in Rehoboth Beach.
Thank you, Walter. Anybody else? Thank you. We're bringing back to the commissioners. Again, Evan is looking for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion.
I'm sorry. Susan jumped in.
I have a question of Evan and perhaps the chief. How did we arrive at this configuration?
Well, we had extensive discussions in-house. We actually, I want to address one of the comments that was made. And that was the possible location of the bollards at the end of Rehoboth Avenue on the boardwalk along the curb line. But what we ran into was there is extremely difficult. It would be almost impossible to locate the bollards there because of the amount of utilities. So on the north side, there's transformers here. On the south side, there's transformers here. There are sidewalk lights here. There's the historic fountain. There's water sewer line. So it was, we originally, we were looking at that to try and, again, aesthetics, hide some of the bollards from some of the natural elements that are there. But again, it just would not have been possible. So that's why we proposed to move them back to the boardwalk. You know, as mentioned before, we've been talking about this for probably a year now in pretty great detail. And ultimately, this is what we've arrived at.
And then I have a follow-on question. The, the bollards that are on the other side of the toilets?
Yes.
Those are made necessary because of the concerts.
Correct.
Because we don't have protections all up and down Rehoboth Avenue. But for the concerts, we wouldn't need those.
So concerts, special events, I mean, again, the whole plan is to be able to physically secure this area. And if these bollards are installed, you know, then it's just a matter of securing the travel lanes just to prevent anybody from doing any damage from Rehoboth Avenue. Certainly, whenever the bandstands not closed, now these travel lanes are open. And so that opens up a threat now at the end of Rehoboth Avenue at the bandstand or at the boardwalk, sorry.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Saunders?
Mr. Miller, can you just remind us again? This is only the first phase of a three-part program, is that right?
That's correct. I'd rather not go into details right now. I think it could be something that we talk about, maybe as part of the budget discussions, but only because of the way that we've worded the language. I don't want to go into too much detail.
Mayor?
Commissioner?
Yeah, I appreciate what you, you know, your presentation, Mr. Miller. But I think, and it was, I think, an honest mistake that the specs for the other parts of the project were distributed on a table. So, and they've been widely disseminated, you know, whether it's on Facebook or on Nextdoor. So I think we, we can't like, you know, live in a vacuum here and pretend that the public doesn't know the other locations, which might be reasonable. I mean, I have, I haven't made a trip down to Ocean City, but I, there are some very good photos of their configuration. And it's basically just to protect the boardwalk. So those other locations are simply to prevent a vehicle like larger than our little electric trash truck, although there are gates, obviously, for, you know, city vehicles to access the boardwalk. So I think for the, I think it's a normative decision in the sense that, you know, some of us have a perception that, that this is a, a high risk in our society. Other people disagree, you know? I mean, we're a little far from any major city where they have devoted a lot of resources. I mean, you look at the National Mall, all along, all the federal agencies and museums, obviously after 9/11, you have bollards galore. And the only, the only vehicle that was actually stopped by a bollard, I happen to know, at the Hirshhorn Museum, a truck driver tragically had a heart attack. And if it weren't for the bollard, he might have, which stopped his truck, he might have damaged more than just the sculpture behind it that was damaged. He might have ramped. It was 2:00 AM, by the way, so the museum, you know, there were no visitors. So I just hope, given the uncertainty in my mind with the bandstand, which is inadequate in size for the crowd that is gathering for these concerts, like we are, this is, seems premature with the exception of maybe hardening the boardwalk by the wood, like where that little pagoda is and where I wanted to move the newsstands. But I haven't made much progress on that. But anyway, and those other three, I hope I have it right, but the other three locations, that, you know, has some merit, right? But these other bollards, I'm very concerned. They take away space. They're unattractive. And again, for, you know, I, I think we need, like, everybody dreams of the Wilmington and Baltimore Avenue streetscapes. Well, honestly, Rehoboth Avenue at that east end could use some aesthetic enhancement. And this is not it.
Thank you, Suzanne. Patrick?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to award the proposal for Concentric security to install at the boardwalk and bandstand, including the option for the brick paver work in the amount of $812,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner, all right. We have, we have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Craig Thier to award the contract as noted for boardwalk and bandstand, security gate, bollard installation, including the paver work in the amount of $812,000. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
I'd like to open it up for a final discussion. I'd like to comment that, you know, we did this in two parts. The first part, at the October regular meeting, we voted on whether we want to even do the project. And the answer was yes. Unfortunately, the support documents weren't ready for the installation. Or they would have been incorporated into that October regular meeting. And it would have been done in one shot. So I look at this as an extension of that previous meeting. Voting for me is somewhat moot because this decision's already been made to, to install them. I have, I have voiced my preference to city management to try to reduce the number across the sidewalk. And I don't know that that can be done. So if, if not, then we have to live with that. You know, the timing of this, I'm convinced that this will help thwart problems and terrorist activities, if you will, into the future. But the timing is not an exact science for this at all. You know, do we do it this year? Do we put it off two years? No, maybe we can go three years. I don't know. But I think we're getting closer to the need for it. And I voted last time for the project. I will be voting again for this project. I do think it provides the additional security that we need. And, and again, I wanted to acknowledge Allison and others that spoke at the October meeting that I did hear you. And this has not been made a very easy, quick decision. Is there any further discussion? If not, then.
Mayor? Mayor, if I could, please?
Commissioner Thier?
Yeah, a little bit of a follow-on to what the mayor said. To me, I've heard two, two issues today, two separate issues in my mind. You know, one is public safety. And the other is what is the impact of the bandstand events on the businesses? I see those as two separate issues. My vote today is about public safety. I think as the mayor said, we made, really made the decision at our last meeting when we did the first vote to actually purchase the bollards. This is for the installation. I'm committed, and I can't speak for the other members up here, but, you know, we probably do need to look at Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Is it, you know, Friday, Saturday, Wednesday? Whatever the dates of those bandstand events are. I think we all know, right? Part of what has, I think Allison, you had said, you know, this all kind of started in, someone did, maybe it was you, said it's really all started in 2006 when the new bandstand was put in. But it's accelerated over the last few years. And a lot of that is related to the growth in the county, right? Someone mentioned, we got a lot of local people coming in town. So maybe it is time to look at, you know, when the events are, you know, what days the events are. And I'll just leave it at that, right? The point I want to make, because I probably said more than I should have. To me, there's two issues here. One is public safety. That's my vote today. The second is, is bandstand, okay? And I'm committed, can't speak for everyone else up here, but I think we should probably look at the impact of the bandstand events now that they've gotten very large on the businesses in this community. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further conversation? Commissioner Stewart?
I echo Commissioners Thier and also specifically believe the, the bollards are necessary for public safety. And I'm not persuaded that we are a small charming town and it can't happen here. It's just BS. And we can't wait till it happens. The businesses, however, I am very moved by the impact on businesses. And I think, I, deciphering what's been said, that is mostly a function of those large concerts. On those, on the very few, you know, truncated season, 13 weeks or whatever it is. So I, I hope a future agenda topic is what do we do about the concerts? And whether it's move a day or move them somewhere else? Because I think a business could thrive with bollards. But the businesses are hurt by that perfect storm. So if we could, I would have that request.
Okay. Any further conversation? If not, we're going to have a roll call.
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may? Again, I also agree this is a public safety issue for me. This started a couple of years ago when we had a risk, risk assess management done about the threats and hazards that posed for the bandstand area and the concentration of people. You know, I go back to a comment or conversation that was had by the Chamber of Commerce about Sea Witch and what do you do when it gets too successful? And maybe that's what we're doing with regards to, you know, the first year, 35 years ago, we had 500 people show up for Sea Witch. Today, we had almost 100,000. How do you manage success in that regard? So this is a time to maybe investigate the concert series and timing at the bandstand. But that is a separate issue than the issue of public safety. And I think what really brought it home to me with regards to the changes that have been made with Sea Witch and Fourth of July, with the fencing that has been added to control the crowds, the parking changes that we've made. But I think what really happened in my mind is when you look up and see a sharpshooter at the top of the hotels during Sea Witch Festival, this is public safety. We're not, as Chief has said many times, this is not your grandfather's Rehoboth anymore. And I just feel compelled that this is not a chance of if, but when this will occur. And this is a deterrent so that in this fact that we have these bollards and safety measures in place, that someone that is, has a political grind or is outrunning a police officer in a police chase or perhaps is on some type of drug or something of this nature, that this is a deterrent that they may think twice about coming here and will go someplace else. Again, I do look at it as public safety.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, again, we're ready, we have a, what?
I would like to address some of the comments made by Commissioner Gossett just so people have a, might gain a different perspective on sharpshooters. For instance, this does nothing to deter them. So as an example. And also, I think for this summer, an additional police presence. And I, I've been out there. The police are doing a great job. I mean, they're helping people who are confused and thought they could park there and maybe didn't see the sign. So I don't understand why, yes, it's, it's, they're, they're, I'm a person who's all about safety. Maybe no one believes me. But I am not convinced, given the overcrowding at those concerts, particularly like the Saturday night one of the three, that it's, you know, that it's long-term, a tenable location for those concerts. So because of that, it's as though we're throwing this massive amount of money. Maybe what we need to do is harden the boardwalk only the way Ocean City, Maryland has chosen to do with the same Concentric security systems. In fact, Ocean City began installation in 2019. The only incident in which we've had, in recent years, we had a bunch of teenagers who had firearms end up on the boardwalk, I believe it was maybe Grenoble Place or Virginia Avenue. And thankfully, the police, I believe, apprehended them. But their car was actually stopped by that pagoda that's at that east end of either Virginia or Grenoble. So I mean, trying to predict exactly what's going to happen is obviously impossible. But I hear people think this is a, you know, a surefire solution. But a lot of the means used by people to disrupt, you know, our way of life or whatever, carry out these attacks won't be helped by this particular project, which will reduce public right-of-way walking space. And it just seems a little, a little heavy-handed to me.
Thank you. I'd like to call the question. I'm going to do a roll call vote. There's no need to give an explanation. In fact, at this point, we've had discussion. I'd just like a yes or a no. Again, the motion in front of us is essentially to award the contract for installation of the security gates, bollards and, and extra paver work. Commissioner Galante?
Aye.
Commissioner Good?
Nay.
Commissioner Saunders?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Thier?
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Stewart?
Aye.
And the chair, and the chair votes aye, that's, I'm all messed up.
As per usual.
The motion passes. With that, we're going to move on. Thank you all for being here and giving your input. With that, we're going to move on to the next item of this special meeting, which is to discuss and consider a resolution supporting the city's participation in the Delaware State Housing Authority's Zoning and Land Use Reform Pilot Program. Evan?
Thank you, Mayor. I will provide a little bit of a background on the resolution that is before you all for your consideration today. So we, as I think we all know, affordable housing has been a hot topic, not just in the greater Rehoboth Beach area, but all across the entire state for many years. In April of 2025, a 20-member bipartisan Affordable Housing Production Task Force had published a final report. That report is actually embedded in the agenda for your review. And that report just touches on ways in which state and local governments, along with governments, along with private sector partners, could increase the production of affordable rental units and homes in Delaware. I won't go into detail on the report itself. Again, it's embedded in the agenda, but I'll mention that one of the objectives calls for local zoning reform and the creation of a pilot program to provide technical assistance to local governments to explore and implement such reform. Also, I want to mention, in April, Senate Bill 87, and subsequently Senate Amendment 1, was introduced and assigned to the House and Land Use Committee in the Senate. This bill became well-known as the ADU Bill, or the Accessory Dwelling Unit Bill. And just briefly, what that bill would have done is amended Title 25 of the Delaware State Housing Authority Housing Law Code to create a new chapter on accessory dwelling units. ADU is just defined as a residential living unit on the same lot where legally established single-family dwelling is the principal use. And then the ADU must have its own cooking, sleeping, sanitation facilities, and may be attached, detached, or within the primary dwelling itself. That bill also would have made this a byright approval, and it's required for ADUs under this law, meaning that no public hearing, no variance, no conditional use permit, no other discretionary zoning action besides a conformity check would have been required. So as a local government, if that bill were to have passed, we would have been required to adopt ordinances within one year of the law's effective date, that allowed at least one ADU byright, as I said before, allow ADUs that are either attached to the single-family dwelling, detached, or contained within the dwelling, and permit the ADU to be used as rental housing. Furthermore, there was the Senate Amendment 1, which was added to the bill, and that added a requirement that local governments provide a draft of an ordinance to Delaware State Housing Authority and OSPC within six months of the act going into effect. So obviously, there has been a lot of discussion, again, about affordable housing, accessory dwelling units at the state level, and what the state can do to help either force or incentivize local governments to help solve the issue. On August 21st, 2025, Senate Joint Resolution 8 was signed by the governor, so just backing up to the ADU Bill, that is embedded in the agenda as a support document, if anybody wishes to read that. Again, on August, in August of 2025, Senate Joint Resolution 8 was signed by the governor. That's also embedded in the agenda. And that joint resolution directed the Delaware State Housing Authority to create a pilot program for the purpose of providing technical assistance related to zoning ordinance reform to local governments. The goal is, again, to help participating local governments identify and implement zoning practices that increase the supply of affordable housing, and support goals such as equitable development and economic growth throughout the state. I've also provided in the agenda, Chapter 5, an excerpt from Chapter 5 of the City of Rehoboth Beach's 2020 CDP. And in there, it lists that the city's position on housing growth is that growth in the city is being driven by the replacement of older, generally smaller homes with new residential construction that's larger in scale and density. And because of the rapidly escalating property values and popularity of Rehoboth, there's a concern about the availability of affordable and attainable housing in and near the city. There's two goals that are also outlined in the CDP, that is just consider adopting a new mixed-use zone, or mending an existing commercial zone to allow a mix of residential and commercial uses that would provide increased housing opportunities. Again, it's in there, and you can read that goal. The second is to support and encourage a variety of housing stock for all ages and income levels. So before you all today, for your discussion and consideration, is a resolution that would support the City of Rehoboth Beach's participation in the Delaware State Housing Authority's Technical Assistance Program. As part of our participation in the program, we are asked to identify which items from sort of a menu of options for zoning reforms that we would be interested in exploring. And so you'll see in the resolution that we have identified a few of those from sort of the menu of options. The first is possibly allowing accessory dwelling units and/or missing middle housing types as permitted use in residential zones. Again, we thought it was important to acknowledge this one, only because of the recent ADU Bill, and its likelihood that that bill will come back before the General Assembly this next legislative session. The other was increased building heights for multifamily housing and/or mixed-use developments. I know this was a very hot topic that was largely supported by the Mixed-Use Zoning Ordinance Task Force. As you, as the Commissioners know, you know, we have explored mixed use and what we can do to enhance our code to incentivize the creation of mixed use, or at least make it more clear how those mixed uses fit into the City of Rehoboth Beach. The next was establish an inclusionary zoning program to address affordable and workforce housing needs, so whether that's creating additional zoning districts or other programs, again, looking at what options might be out there. And then the last is allow higher-density mixed use within residential and commercial zones or employment centers. So again, on the same topic of mixed use, which is something that we have talked about for quite some time now. Those were the four options that we have sort of identified as maybe, maybe being most applicable to Rehoboth Beach, and ones that we think are worth exploring at this time. Again, the Technical Assistance Program, it's a free program. It's offering assistance to us to help come up with some possible zoning reform. I think the last thing I just want to say on this is, you'll see in the resolution that it kind of mentions our commitment to implementing at least wanting, at least one zoning reform measure. However, we are only obligated to discuss these zoning reforms, draft an ordinance, present it to the Commissioners for your consideration. If the ordinance is not approved by the Commission, that's fine. We simply just have to state in a report to Delaware State Housing Authority why the ordinance was ultimately not adopted after the input from the public and the Commissioners and community stakeholders. So again, we wanted to express our interest to the Board in participating in this program. I think it is important that we get a seat at the table, knowing what's happening at the state level. I would prefer not to be reactionary to requirements that suddenly get imposed on us by the state, but rather, I would like to get a seat at the table and hopefully at least convey at a bare minimum what some of the challenges are with workforce housing in the City of Rehoboth Beach. And how does increasing these housing opportunities affect us? But more importantly, how do we meet the overall goal, and that is keeping them affordable? So that's all I wanted to report. Certainly, we can answer any questions you might have.
So to, so to participate for free in this program, we have to commit to looking into one of these things.
Right.
And I guess I have some hesitation, except when you said we could vote on it and vote it down, because, you know, these all have, are zoning components to it.
Right.
And we're ignoring the Planning Commission and any input from them until such point that we draft an ordinance and put it in front of them. I'm just, I.
Mayor, I wouldn't want to use the word ignore. I mean, I think, you know, as part of this process, as we work with Delaware State Housing Authority, I mean, I would expect involvement with the Planning Commission, involvement with members of the public, you know, and at the appropriate times. And then also, you know, we've put information out there about the partnership with Dover Coal. I think it's an opportunity now for us to kind of merge a lot of these different initiatives together. But again, I, we know that affordable housing is an issue. We've already seen at the state level that they are pushing to enact regulations on the municipalities, so this is an opportunity for us to get free assistance, get a seat at the table, and get out in front of this as much as possible.
Mayor, I appreciate the concern. This is technical assistance. That is, that is the extent of this at the moment. And so for us to be a part of that and gain knowledge from the technical assistance, which is free, I think that this is the way to do that. Any number of things could be checked, but in the end of the day, we are not bound by, by any of that. We are simply asking to be a part of the conversation, and I think that's valuable for the city.
Mayor, if I could, please.
Commissioner there?
So let me start off with a couple of questions. So the Delaware League opposes SB 87. So where do they stand on this, this joint resolution?
I have not talked to the Director for the Delaware Legal Local Governments specifically about this technical assistance program. I have talked to other city and town administrators. We are a part of the City Managers Association of Delaware. I have talked to many others who are taking the same resolution before their boards for consideration, because again, echoing the same thing that I've said today, and that is at least getting a seat at the table to have a say on, you know, what ultimately is being imposed on us and how we could ultimately make it work for us.
Okay. So, and again, you know, this is, I had read this last year. I had conversations with people about this last year. And when I say read this, let me back up. So I reviewed SB 87 last year, okay? I've had conversations with people about SB 87 last year. My perspective on this, unless I'm missing something, this is not good for the City of Rehoboth Beach, okay? I mean, if you look at, at, starting at line 48 of SB 87, and kind of accelerate down to line 50, allow a minimum of one ADU byright on a lot or parcel that contains a single-family dwelling. Where are these people going to park?
Right.
Okay, I mean, I'm asking you that question.
Right.
So to me, we should be running from participating in this and doing everything we can to fight SB 87, because this is not gonna work for the City of Rehoboth Beach. It's gonna cause chaos in the city.
Yeah, and again, so accessory dwelling units was only one component of the possible zoning reforms.
But, but am I, am I misunderstanding what this is saying, right? Because what this is saying to me is, is that, you know, my, literally everyone up here who has a sing, all of us that have single-family dwelling units, we could build an ADU out back. That, by the way, on line 55, says, allow an ADU to be used as rental housing. Doesn't say, you know, does not delineate between long-term and short-term rental housing, okay? Complete chaos, right? I mean, we should be doing everything we possibly can to fight SB 87. Am I misunderstanding something here?
Commissioner, forgive me, no, you're not. And I think that's the value of the technical assistance, so that we can make the point, that for Rehoboth, this is not what it is being billed to be. And I think if we are not at the table, then we risk the inability to make that point. And so in the technical assistance phase, which is where this is, I just, you know, I think Evan and I have spoken at length about this, this is the technical assistance phase, where somebody is going to be getting information from us, and we're going to be getting information from them. And this is our opportunity to explain why in most, you know, for the City of Rehoboth, this is not what it is being billed to be. If we are not a part of that, I think we risk that, that opportunity.
Yeah, so I can't, I mean, I can't support this resolution. I feel the opposite, which is, is that we should not be participating and making a statement that we are, you know, vehemently opposed to the language in this bill today, because it's not gonna work.
Well, I've had hesitation too, a little bit, but I think City's Solicitor's exactly right. We need, we need a seat at the table. The other, the other thing is, I believe it was the governor recently that said, you all, you all, the municipalities, need to start looking at this type of thing. And if you don't make some progress on it, I'm gonna dictate what you're gonna do. You know, again, I'm more comfortable now that I know that it's not moot, that signing this means we are, we have to abide by ADU Bill or any of these other things.
I think the other thing that we could consider, I mean, so we have now, as you see, sort of checked the one option about allowing accessory dwelling units. I mean, I think the intent with that was so that we could at least talk about ADUs and how they impact the city and the challenges that we would have with implementing them. If there's hesitation to even discuss accessory dwelling units with the State Housing Authority, I mean, we could remove that as something we're worth exploring, and then kind of fight the bill on the side. But again, I think the option to at least explore that through the technical assistance would give us a greater opportunity to, as the Solicitor said, kind of open the door for some dialogue about the challenges that we have.
And I would just add that, that if we do not get the technical assistance on this, it would hurt us if a bill was passed. So what this would do is be able to look at, what are we able to do that fits our city in particular? So of course, we wouldn't want ADUs on 5,000-square-foot lots. Maybe there's a solution where there's larger lots that maybe it is appropriate. I don't know. But if we don't look into it before something happens, then we'll be essentially scrambling to come up with a solution.
Let me, let me ask a follow-up question, which is, this bill, SB 87, you had mentioned when it was, it's been around for a while.
Yeah.
Right? What have we done, right? Because it's the same language, and this language doesn't work for the City of Rehoboth Beach. What have we done to try and get the language of this bill passed?
We've met with our legislators to discuss what would work for the city. That didn't bring any fruit to those discussions, but, but again.
So are they not interested in changing the language of the bill?
Not, not at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll also have to see, so this is a bill that was introduced last legislative session, so when the session starts up again in January, we'll have to see what bill is ultimately introduced. I mean, if there's an amendment to it, or whether it just remains sort of as is. You know, as I think was mentioned before, we are a member of the Delaware Legal Local Governments, which has a Legislative Advocacy Committee, which I sit on, and the mayor's my alternate. And that gives us an opportunity to at least weigh in on some of the legislation. And as you said before, Commissioner, the Delaware League has been opposed to this. I don't know that that has had much of an influence on the bill, though, frankly.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. I, one, this, this is a free resource, and I think, you know, I have to address comments, that as I talked to Russ Huxtable about this, that there's a provision in there that we can't eliminate them by putting in prohibitive barriers or onerous zoning. It doesn't overwhelm our FAR. If you're on a 5,000-square-foot lot and you've used up your FAR, you have no room for an ADU. So I think we get, there are certain, like, like ADU is a triggering word in this, in this jurisdiction, and it's kind of crazy, because all over in certain neighborhoods, there are garage apartments with accessory dwelling units in them that were grandfathered in on tiny lots. So I think rejecting this is saying, we don't want to be informed. We don't want to have educated dialogue from experts on how to handle this. You know, I had a very interesting conversation with a developer who said, I am all for building workforce housing, and I can make it work economically, because my knee-jerk reaction was, what developer's gonna do, you know, mixed-use workforce housing? And he said, no, I can do that. It's your code stopping it. So we need to put our big-girl pants on and get part of this organization, and accept the free input, and get a seat at the table. That's what I think about it.
Thank you.
I will just, if I could just add one thing, too.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
The, just so the Commissioners are aware, and the public is aware also, the application to participate in the technical assistance program was due at the end of October, so we did submit the application. I have word from Delaware State Housing Authority that we have been approved for the technical assistance pending the resolution. So I meant to include that earlier in my remarks, and I neglected to, so just wanted to add that, yeah.
So Mayor, yeah, I, I'm, I agree with Commissioner Stewart, along with some others, and I don't see a particular downside to this. Obviously, our housing stock doesn't present as having a lot of capacity for workforce housing. I mean, my property, I actually have the space for an accessory dwelling unit, but neither my husband nor I is interested in being a landlord, and, you know, fortunately, we don't really need to collect rent from someone in our backyard. But, so I think, yeah, it's, it's a critical issue. The cost of housing here is, is just, although, it's actually abating a bit, you know, if you've noticed what's happened in the county, and the number of kids who were added to the school district has mitigated, and I, I don't know, I think the run-up in property taxes and other factors may, may actually ease the housing crisis a little bit, which, you know, which is a good thing. So, but yeah, I don't see, I think this is a positive development, and I appreciate your, you know, I'm, I'm fine that you went ahead and sort of got a provisional sign-up going for the City of Rehoboth. That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Scalonic?
Thank you. I, too, agree with Commissioner Stewart's comments. I too agree with Commissioner Stewart's comments on this topic. I, I can't think of a good reason why we would not want to see it at the table. I think it only penalizes us in the long term. I had a question for, for you, Evan, about the resolution specifically. The section that's, that reads, create pre-reviewed design plans for missing middle housing types. That's not checked, and I am curious why, because that one seems to me like one we would want to have on the table.
We certainly can check that box. I was just trying to identify ones that sort of jumped out immediately at me as topics that we have discussed or has been introduced recently, but I would have no problem checking that as an option.
Could you add a little, maybe, detail about exactly what would be included in that? I mean, I can guess, but it would be helpful if you could add some more context.
I might defer to our Director of Building and Licensing, because he might be able to talk a little bit more to sort of the pre-reviewed design plans, what that looks like, how that might be able to work for us, if you're prepared to do that, Corey. Sure, maybe.
Commissioner Galanti. The, first, before I give an answer to that, there's a recent publication that was put out by the Director of, in Tennessee, one of the larger municipalities called Beyond Zoning. Really good read. I've skimmed it, I haven't read the full thing, but it's all about the missing middle, and how he worked with the fire marshals and the other building officials to create a, to get around their zoning to help with this missing middle. And you can, one of the blocks here was ADUs and/or missing middle. We are with Dover Coal right now, looking into, we're at a very preliminary stage right now. This will help support those services, but considering form-based codes versus conventional zoning codes. And I think that there's going to be a lot of wonderful discussion that will happen about that. I don't want to get into it too much today. I'm not prepared yet for that discussion, but by moving to a form-based, we essentially let go of FAR in itself, and the form of the building takes over. And if we can work with architectural guidelines and some of the work that we've already done in the city, we can work with these types of forms, so that if a developer does come in with a building of a certain form, which would be mixed-use, it could, it could, it could meet those requirements already for, for coming into, showing certain forms or levels of compliance, while we would simply look at other, other aspects of it. And I think that's where we would look at pre-reviewed in that aspect.
Are you referring to the, I'm sorry, Mayor. Mayor, if I could, please. Thank you. So the example that you just gave, I don't want to say the example, the ongoing discussions you're having with Dover Coal about form taking over FAR, is that specific to the commercial area, or does that apply to the residential area as well?
Well, again, right now, it's very preliminary. I think there are elements and, of the residential districts, for instance, the open porches and the, and the form that we, of the houses here that we could look at. But certainly, we're going to have a, a lot of public outreach and input for when those discussions come. As it relates to this, we'd be more looking at the, the missing middle, which would be anywhere between, it's, once you move away from your duplex and/or triplex, you kind of get into the three to five to six, maybe, dwelling units that would sit atop a commercial. And so that's where, as far as the Technical Assistance Program, and back to Commissioner Galanti's specific question I was referring to.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, the, when you're referring to commercial residential, you're referring to the commercial district in town, not the residential district?
In the context of this, correct, yes.
Dover Coal. Define for me missing middle, because I'm not sure I'm fully understanding. We use the term missing middle. What does that mean?
Sure. Missing middle tech, is typically, your residential codes get you up to, you know, single-family and duplex, they can take over townhouses, but no more than three stories. Commercial building codes take over the rest after that. And there's this, you know, the law of the excluded middle, that's where I believe that kind of comes from, the, you, you have, you know, single-family, and then you have a 60-unit hotel. And a lot of municipalities struggle with this missing middle, and that's what this is, where we would be promoting dwelling units between three and five typically, and that's where that sits.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So we have a resolution in front of us, written by city staff. I'd like to go to the public first before we come back here. Does anybody like to say anything about this topic? If not, I would, I believe we're ready.
Mayor, if I may, a question, just to, Evan, is there any timing deadline on this, when we have to accomplish a resolution, not a resolution, but any type of formal code change or anything of that nature?
No, none published.
It's pretty open-ended.
Yes.
So I, I would agree with Commissioner Thier that SB 87 is not practical in the sense that the way it's designed is one-size-fits-all, and that just cannot be applicable to an entire state. You know, it has an impact on our green space, our parking, our setbacks, our FAR, so many of this, but to have a place at the table with, quote, "free" technical assistance, I think is another way to fight, if you will, or to inform the authors of SB 87 of, of how this would impact individual communities. And the more that we are able to communicate with those legislators of the negative impacts that this would have, and also present to them some positive impacts, which would be multi-unit housing here in the city, which I think is, is the way to go in the, in the boxes that you've checked, Evan. Outline or focus on those aspects, which I think we've been working on, and we should continue to that. So if I may, Mayor, if there's no other comments, I would like to make...
I do have, actually, Mayor, I had a query.
Yeah.
I, it's, I, maybe, I'm very appreciative of Mr. Shenko, you know, admitting, you know, you're, you're not ready to do a full presentation, but soon, I think we, some of us, at least I need a primer on this. I'm more accustomed to these accessory dwelling units in places like Atherton, California, where you're talking about like an eight-acre property, so it's not going to measurably increase density there, whereas, because we're dealing with a vast majority of the lots being, being 5,000 square feet, you know, we have very different parameters than the places I'm aware of where you have a preponderance of these little guest cottages. Often, it's, you know, elderly parent or parents are living there, or, you know, the famous O.J. Simpson, whatever cottage that guy was living on, on the property. But, so maybe help us to understand whether in terms of noise ordinances, an other problem, you know, that maybe Rehoboth may not be as well-suited to start increasing the number of, of these accessory dwelling units, which are more affordable and therefore are sort of meet, meet what we would consider workforce housing for some of our workers. And it, yeah, it's a terrible problem for the workers, especially between like Memorial Day and Labor Day, to find affordable accommodations. I mean, we know that. That, that, I don't think that's, it's been easy for them to find anything for 25 years.
Thank you, Suzanne.
I just want to make, Mayor, if I could, please.
Yeah.
Right. Because again, you know, I'm trying to make the decision here on whether I'm going to support this or not, so I just, just going to have one final question here, right? So if I'm understanding this, right, so I'm line 46, you know, this under the, now, therefore it is hereby resolved, line 46, you know, we're saying we're going to work to implement the recommendations provided by the technical systems provider that are related to the zoning and land use reforms selected below. There's a bunch of language, and then on 62, it's the selection below. So we're talking about, we're interested in the missing middle housing as it was defined, which is three to five units on a lot. Increased building heights for multifamily housing and/or mixed-use developments. So we're talking about going above 42 feet. Okay, I just want to be clear, I mean, these are the things that we're proposing and that we're willing to work on, right? Next one's fine. High-density mixed-use with residential and commercial zones, that's fine, right? But it's those first two. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding what it is you're proposing that we're proposing. Your recommendation is, is that we want to work with them on, to implement any recommendations, which could be three to five units is fine on a residential lot.
Yep, and then the paragraph that starts on line 58, that's what I had mentioned before, so if the recommended ordinances changes are not adopted, the jurisdiction must share documentation on the public engagement that occurred after the changes were introduced and the reasons why adoption did not occur.
Okay.
So ultimately, if it is not supported, we just notify them of why it wasn't.
Define public engagement for me. What do you plan on doing to engage the public? You going to have public hearings? You going to have public sessions? What's your plan?
Sure, so we, at least initially, and again, I don't know that we've put a lot of thought into it just yet, because we're waiting to see if there is support for it, but we have already reached out to the Rehoboth Beach Homeowners Association to kind of get a conversation going with them related to this topic. As I mentioned before, I would expect that we would have outreach and engagement with Planning Commission. I imagine there would probably be several meetings that we have with the Board of Commissioners, where at least it's an item on the agenda to provide you all with an update on where we stand with the technical assistance, and then certainly ultimately the ordinance adopted. But again, that's kind of just off the top of my head, some of the initial thoughts. But we have already reached out to the Homeowners Association, that is very interested in this, this partnership.
Okay, I think that's a start. I think it would be an understatement to say that some of these things are very controversial. So I think some of the things you presented as a start, you know, are a start, but, okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I think we're ready to adopt a resolution before us supporting the city's participation in the Delaware State Housing Authority's Technical Assistance Program.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach, supporting the participation in the Delaware State Housing Authority's Technical Assistance to local governments to implement zoning and land use reforms that support, that support housing efforts.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, and a second by Commissioner Suzanne Good, to adopt the resolution before us supporting the city's participation in the Delaware State Housing Authority's Technical Assistance Program. Is that okay, Patrick?
Yes.
All right, it's shortened a little. Very good. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Suzanne Good?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Saunders?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig Thier?
No.
Commissioner Suzanne, Susan Stewart?
Yes.
I apologize. I got you to a yes. Commissioner Galanti?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. That's a six to one, and the motion carries. Thank you for your work on that, Evan. And with that, where's my agenda? Citizen comment? Is there anybody who has any citizen comment? Off-topic? No. With that, there's no further business. This meeting is adjourned at 12:15 PM. Thank you, thank you, Carol, thank you, Francis.